City Council Meeting, it is March 10th, 2025, and I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:00. It is always nice to see so many engaged members of our community come together when we're making decisions that impact our community as a whole. So I just want to thank all of you for being here this evening. And for anyone standing in the back, there is overflow seating in the other room as well. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Spade.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chance.
Here.
Councilmember Bennett.
Here.
Councilmember Hackett.
Here.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here. Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the February 10th council meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? It's time for the City Manager's Report. Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a couple of items. First, a few items of business here, some liquor permits. First one is for Maha Foods LLC, doing business as Bimos, is a D2, which is wine and certain prepackaged mixed drinks for on-premises consumption in sealed containers for carryout until 1:00 a.m. Council can opt to request a hearing or not request a hearing and do that via motion.
Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to not request a hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
The second permit is for Mercy Wines LLC, is a D3, which is spiritus liquor for on-premises consumption only until 1:00 a.m., and similarly can request or not request a hearing.
Make a motion to not request a hearing?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
A couple of other items for council's awareness. This Friday, March 14th, representatives throughout Warren County will be gathering at Great Wolf Lodge. They'll hear from both the Convention Visitors Bureau on significant 2024 sports and tourism efforts, which the city has played a significant role in, as well as a preview of what's coming this year. It will also conclude with the Best of Warren County Awards. So that means occurring this Friday, March 14th. The Warren County Municipal League is meeting on March 19th at Shakurun Golf Course with a presentation from the Ohio Municipal League. Also, Thursday, March 20th, the Maids CDC is hosting a Mile Meetup. That'll be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. and being held at the American Legion Post on Redding Road. Community members can learn more about what the status is on the Mason Mile Project and what upcoming initiatives are planned and how they could get involved. Another reminder, the 2024 tax filing deadline for City of Mason taxes is Tuesday, April 15th. City of Mason offers and continues trying to expand how we can assist residents with that obligation. There's online tax filing, phone assistance, as well as in-person. Tax filings can be dropped off here at the Municipal Center, as well as continuing with extended hours when folks can come in and receive assistance in filing their Mason income taxes. Saturday, April 12th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., tax staff will be available, as well as the evening of Tuesday, April 15th until 7:00 p.m. They really work hard and I think are very, try to be very accessible, very helpful for folks in taking care of that. And then wanted to draw special attention, and perhaps members of the Board of Veterans Affairs will echo this, but want to make sure folks are aware of the city's partnership with the American Legion, as well as the local VFW post, as they are all coming together on Saturday, April 5th to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War and to provide a welcome home, both parade and ceremony for Vietnam veterans. That event, the parade, will begin at 10:00 a.m. It will begin here on Lakeside. Folks can gather on Lakeside here between the school and the Municipal Center, and will be followed by a ceremony right inside here in the atrium of the Municipal Center. Certainly encouraging Vietnam veterans to register through the city's webpage of the American Legion, as well as residents throughout the community, throughout the region, to come and participate in that event. Finally here, would like to, Assistant City Manager Jennifer Heft has an introduction. Next item on the agenda, a special guest that's here in the audience.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, I'd like to call your attention to a very impressive young lady that we have, her and her family here with us this evening. Her name's Sydney Stoughton, and she's just 15 years old. Sydney is an academic scholar, as well as a women's hockey player. She, her academic scholars has earned her, along with her hockey, her, I can't even talk tonight, her abilities as a hockey athlete have earned her a position on the lovely, Love Lovell Academy in Boston. Sydney started her career out here at the Cincinnati Cyclones before moving on and earning a spot on the Alaskan Wild Hockey Team. Probably her most notable worthy to date, and I say "to date" because I expect even greater things from this, is that she recently represented the United States at the 2025 International Hockey Federation Under-18 Women's World Championship in Finland, where she helped her team bring home a silver medal. That like to her. Sydney's with us this evening, and I think she's agreed to say a few words. Just talk a little bit about her experience that she's had playing hockey.
Hi, I'm Sydney. I just want to say that hockey has brought me a lot. It's brought me to my closest friends, and I wouldn't be here without my family. And a little bit of my experience in Finland is that it was an amazing experience. Finland is definitely different than the United States. There's a lot of snow there. But it was a great experience, and I'm definitely glad to be back home in Mason, so.
Councilmembers?
Sydney, I don't think we're done.
And there is overflow seating in the other room. For everyone who's standing in the back, you can take a seat in the other room.
If I could just echo this and not embarrass anyone, we cannot have folks standing or seated on the floors. There are a couple of seats available up here if folks can take those. Otherwise, we'd encourage you to go into the overflow space across the hall.
All right, next is the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association Award Recognition. And I'd like to introduce the City of Mason Parks and Recreation Director. She does a phenomenal job with our programming and keeping our parks as beautiful as they are, Chrissy Avery.
Thank you for that introduction. The city is a member of the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association, so it's an organization dedicated to helping Parks and Recreation districts with best practices, and they provide support, a lot of resources to help us maintain, like, the best practices with industry standards. Each year, they recognize 13 different organizations and 13 different categories for excelling in different ways. This year, the City of Mason was selected for their category of capital projects in the range of $500,000 to $10 million, and that project was the Adaptive Ballfields at McKino Park. So I'd like to introduce Susan Murdock. Susan was incredibly instrumental with Mason Youth Challenger and leading and spearheading the fundraising efforts. She worked tirelessly to help us meet that benchmark so we could get the project complete. So come on up.
Thank you, Chrissy, for those fine words. I really appreciate it. I want to thank the City of Mason and City Council for wanting to partner with us and put these fields out there. We are so lucky, because not only did we get fields that remove all the barriers for our players, but we are also located in McKino Park that has the Playground Common Ground also. So this has been an amazing ride for me over the 12 years of working with the city, but last year was really special. Our opening day to see those kids walk onto those fields. So thank you for giving them a place to play that makes them feel like major league players. But mostly too, by taking away those barriers now, our coaches get to just concentrate on baseball with our kids. So the program is flourishing this year. I, as you also know, have stepped down as the President of Mason Challenger League, so I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you to Jennifer Christmas, who will be taking over that position.
I'm short, sorry. Thank you, Susan, for that introduction, and thank you to the City of Mason for all the work that you did and working with us on those fields. It's amazing. As a parent and as a board member of the Mason Challenger League, I really and truly have no words. As Susan mentioned, to see the smiles on the kids' faces, to know that our coaches could just coach, it's been an amazing ride. And I look forward to working and trying to pick up where Susan's left off. Susan has done an amazing job the last 12 years as the President of the Mason Challenger Board. Mason Challenger really and truly wouldn't be where it is without her and all her hard work. So I look, I'm going to try my best to keep on moving forward. So thank you.
Susan, on behalf of City Council and the city, we have a token of our appreciation there, and if councilmembers could step forward, we'd love to get a photograph as well.
Mayor, before we get up there, can I say something real quick? So I, when I found out that they were having this recognition at the conference, I requested. I called Eric and I said, "Can I go and attend? I want to be there when they get the award." Through my years on council, I've always been very supportive. First, it was Common Ground at McKino Park, and then, of course, the Adaptive Ballfields. So it was, I was very grateful that I was allowed to attend and see our city receive that award. But sitting there, I found out there's like a ton of other awards. I'm pretty sure we could, we could probably be getting, receiving because of all the amazing programs that we have here within the city and what our Parks Department does. So on the way home, I called Eric. I said, "Eric, why aren't we applying for more of these recognitions?" And he goes, "This is exactly why I don't let you go anywhere, because you cause more work for the staff." So anyway, congratulations. I just, I thought it was really awesome, and I was very grateful I was able to be there. Thank you.
Oh, she left, darn it. Susan. Well, I just wanted to, she, she has done an amazing job for our city. There you are. You know, I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done for our community. You are an amazing woman, and we are so happy to have you as part of the team here. And you're going to be missed, but you're, the person who's following you is going to do a great job too. But I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done for us. Okay, next we have recognition of visitors. But if you are here for Ordnance 2025-23, which is the Mesa-Montgomery Zoning for the Heritage Presbyterian Church, or Ordnance 2025-24 for the Kings Mills Conditional Use, that, both of these are first readings. We will have a public hearing for those on April 14th. So if you could hold any comment on those until the next meeting, that would be appreciated. And then if you're here for the 2025-11 zoning for the Marijuana Dispensaries, if you could wait until the, the public hearing, which is actually up next. So if anyone else would like to come to the podium and speak. So we do have a five-minute time limit, and once you get to the podium, if you can just give me your name and your address, please.
My name is Barry Polly. I live at 6365 Fieldstone Drive here in Mason. I'm here really tonight just to raise an issue with council. I talked to Mark about this previously. Within Corbin-Nixon and Pine Hill Parks, we have a longstanding infestation of honeysuckle plants. I'd hope to be joined tonight by two horticulturists, one a local resident, Phil Summer, and one with Cincinnati City Parks. They were not able to be here tonight. So really, I'm primarily here just to get kind of next direction guidance from you all. It's too bad Chrissy left. She might be the next person I should go to. But the question is, what would be our next steps if we were to bring to council or to Chrissy a proposal to eradicate the honeysuckle population in those two parks?
I'd actually say your next step is talking with Kurt Seiler. I know we'd done a little bit of looking at that here a couple of weeks ago, but Kurt would be able to give you broad direction amongst different departments on what, how to handle that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'd like volunteering Kurt for things, so it's all win.
All right. Next is Ordnance 2025-11. This is the second reading. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
An ordinance...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Jeff, yes.
I'm sorry. An ordinance to repeal, amend, and add various sections and chapters of the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations.
Thank you. I would like to move to amend Exhibit A of the ordinance to make all necessary changes to prohibit adult-use cannabis operations in all zoning districts in the same manner as medical marijuana is prohibited. And I will need someone to make a motion for that.
I was going to make that motion to amend that. Should I repeat that, or is that? I was going to make the motion to amend Exhibit A to the ordinance to make all the necessary changes to prohibit adult-use cannabis operations in all zoning districts in the same manner as medical marijuana is prohibited.
Okay, would someone like to make the motion?
She just did.
Well, she did. Okay, then a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff, could you explain to everybody what that means, amending the motion?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So... Sorry, I was just writing that down, so I know what was just, what just happened. Yes, so what you have before you is Ordnance 2025-11. It is scheduled for a public hearing, which you will have momentarily. But just to be clear, what just happened is council just adopted a motion to amend the exhibit to this ordinance, and the basis of that motion was to prohibit adult-use cannabis, adult-use marijuana uses in the same manner as medical marijuana. Our code right now currently prohibits medical marijuana in all districts, and the gist of that amendment would be to change the exhibit so that adult-use marijuana is treated exactly the same. So under this amendment, moving forward from, because it passed at this point, the ordinance that you will be considering as amended will completely prohibit adult-use cannabis and it will leave medical marijuana also prohibited. So they'll be treated uniformly, but prohibited instead of permitted. But I, I need to, we just, I want to make sure we're all on the same page procedurally. The amendment just passed. You still have, you will still conduct the public hearing, and after the public hearing is concluded, then you have to vote on Ordnance 2025-11 as you just amended it. So what you will be voting on after the public hearing is, well, and Jordy is here, and Jordy is going to explain all the other things that are in this zoning amendment. But the part that I suspect many people want to make sure we're all on the same page is that Ordnance 2025-11 would now prohibit both types of marijuana sales in the city. And with that, Jordy is going to talk about the remaining items.
Yeah, I just get all the boring stuff now. Good evening. So the zoning code update was precipitated mostly by us needing to update our floodplain regulations to meet FEMA's new requirements. Those need to go into effect by the end of April, which is why we're before you tonight. The general, general gist of it is that FEMA updated their regulations, they updated their flood insurance rate maps, and so we are updating our regulations just to match what FEMA has. Beyond that, if you have questions, Kirk can answer them, because it's more of an engineering thing. And then I will turn to the other zoning items. Is it possible to get the computer screen up? Thank you. So there's a number of just really minor administrative grammatical changes I won't spend a lot of time on. I'm just going to talk about some of the larger ones in the code before you tonight. So the first one is that our fee schedule was out of date in the zoning code, so we've just removed that and said it will be on hand in our office, as opposed to having to update the zoning code every year. These are those possible definitions which the amendment would remove. In our residential zoning districts, right now, procedurally, we have been allowing driveways or paved concrete patios inside rear yard setbacks, but our zoning code was unclear on that. So we've added language just to make our practice match what's actually in our zoning code. Again, this is language on dispensaries, which would potentially be removed. Again, our zoning code was silent on flag lots in pretty much all of our districts. In conversations with the city engineer, what we've landed on is not allowing flag lots in our commercial districts, the thought there being that businesses in commercial districts want to be up front, they want to be on the road, they want that visibility. But allowing flag lots in our office parks and industrial districts, typically they're not getting the same traffic or visitors. They don't need that signage, so it makes more sense. We also have a lot of flag lots in our office parks, so this is going to bring a number of properties in the city that currently aren't in compliance into compliance with our zoning code. Lighting, again, Planning Commission, we require zero-foot candles at the property perimeter, so that just means any lighting on a site isn't going to spill over into neighboring properties. That's never been codified before, so we are adding that into the zoning code, so that should match as procedurally what we do. And then a large one for us is going to be off-street parking. So we do have parking minimums, but what we've been finding as its new development comes, they're building a site up from scratch. They're going to know their parking needs better than we are as a city. So we are allowing companies that are building for the first time to deviate from our parking requirements. They need to provide justification as to why they're providing the amount of parking they're providing. But so long as they're doing that, we would allow them to do that without having to get a variance from our zoning board of appeals. A common variance that our zoning board of appeals has been seeing is properties that are through lots. So that is when typically they're residential properties in a subdivision. You have frontage on your subdivision street, but the back of your property fronts up to a major Mason road. So Hickory Woods, Heritage Presbyterian, Village Lakes, you might have your home facing your residential property, but then backing up to Tyler'sville, Mason Road, Bethany Road. Anybody who wants to put a fence in what acts as their backyard isn't allowed, because we don't allow fences in the front yard. Our zoning board of appeals has always granted those variances, so long as the fences are screened from landscaping. So we've added language into the zoning code to allow any of those residential properties to build those as right. They're not going to need a variance. That's going to eliminate anywhere from four to 10 variances that our ZBA sees a year, so it's going to make it easier for residents. For billboards, we are still allowing billboards, but we did have a section in there that regulated content that is illegal, so we are just removing that. And then the last one, which is another variance that we're seeing a lot, is anywhere where a drive-through use is permitted as right. They weren't allowed menu signs, and that didn't make a lot of sense. So anytime there was a drive-through, they were having to come to our zoning board of appeals to get a menu. So especially along Kings Mills, Duncan, Carriage House Car Wash, Panera, Starbucks, any of those businesses had to come through ZBA. So we've updated our zoning code to allow one menu sign for each drive-through. It would be a maximum of six feet in height and 36 square feet, which is about the size. We looked at what all of those variances were. That sort of matches that size. So this would allow that menu again without having to get a variance. And then lastly, a little quirk, we didn't have a height limit on signage in our industrial districts, so we just put a height limit on that. So those are the major changes. I skipped over some of the more minor ones, but I'm available for any questions. And with that, Ordnance 2025-11 is recommended for adoption.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I would like to open the public meeting at 7:29. If anyone wishes to come and speak at the podium, you're more than welcome to do so. But I do ask that if you have already heard somebody say something, please don't just keep repeating the same thing over and over. We want to give an opportunity for, you know, anyone to give some different perspective or new information. And in order to keep the meeting moving efficiently and effectively, we just ask that when you come up, you just say something that is different than what has already been said. So thank you for your cooperation on that. We do have a five-minute time limit, and when you get to the podium, if you can please list your name, as well as your address, I would appreciate it. So who would like to come speak at the podium? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Binmae Padili, and I live in the area code 4501 Woodside Place. I am here today to talk about the Marijuana Dispensary zoning changes. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, Law Officer, and all of Mason City Council members, as well, as we all know, there has been talk about marijuana dispensaries lately. We are all here fighting against it, because marijuana negatively impacts every single one of us in so many different ways. The people of Mason deserve better. My dad, Nogaraju Padili, created thechange.org with his friend's support to stop the zoning changes. As a member of the community, Carmel, we looked at the possible proposed zoning dispensaries, and the land happened to be right in front of our community on... and the land happened to be right in front of our community on State Road 741. As I stand here today, I am here to voice out my opinion. However, it's not only my opinion, it represents the voice of every single person in our community. Everyone here is present because they want to stop the zoning changes. We want everyone to continue to grow up in the social norms. However, having a balance between accessibility and maintaining a community's values is important when considering the location of these marijuana stores. Data from the Insurance Institution for Highway Safety shows that the legalized marijuana have seen a 6% increase in crash rates. Dispensaries and marijuana could lead to more impaired drivers on our roads, putting residents at risk. However, it's not only the social norms of society being impacted. As my peers said before, countless health problems come with the use of marijuana, such as gum disease and tooth loss. However, some of its effects may be indirect. The use of marijuana, especially when smoked or vapes, can have a significant influence on the mouth, teeth, gums, and your overall oral health. One of the main reasons being marijuana reduces the saliva production in your mouth, which is vital for maintaining oral health. Saliva helps neutralize the acids in your mouth, washing away food particles and fighting off the bacteria in your mouth. Without enough saliva, the mouth can get exposed to harmful bacteria. The opening of a marijuana store in the proximity of our city should be banned. Taking into consideration that our community isn't the only one facing these problems, I realize that Mason City shares the same goals in shutting down such stores. Dispensaries affect the character and the quality of life in the urban neighborhoods. Thank you for your understanding and your consideration. As I am here today, I would also like to propose some alternatives. Family-friendly development instead of dispensaries. We could focus on attracting such businesses that aligns with Mason's family-friendly values, such as parks, schools, or retail spaces. As well as community input, any zoning changes should reflect on the input and the priorities of the Mason residents, ensuring that the developed decisions benefit the entire community. We should all be here today to voice our concerns and shut down any, the idea of any opening of the marijuana stores in our city. To wrap this up, I recommend members of the city council to take this into serious consideration and advise the closure of our Mason citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to speak? I know we had people in the other room that did want to come, so if you'd like to come to the podium, feel free to do that. Yes, come to the podium. We can line a couple people up if you want to get in line.
I'm Kathy Elliott, 5322 Crestwood Drive in Mason, and I'm here to address the vote regarding Mason zoning for marijuana-associated businesses. Prior to the 2023 Ohio Issue Two Marijuana Legalization Initiative, Mason had passed zoning legislation preventing any such businesses from opening and operating in Mason. However, with the passing of Issue Two, in which statewide voters and Mason voters approved decriminalizing marijuana for medical and recreational use, my understanding was that council is now considering updating their citywide zoning to align with the state. I have read a resolution from the Warren County Republican Party Executive and Central Committees requesting that all Warren County jurisdictions ban marijuana dispensaries. And I watched the speech that was given at the February 10th city council meeting in which Warren County Republican Chair Christian Mays stated that he represents 70% of registered voters in the county, and he also pleaded for the prohibitive zoning to remain intact. And while I'm not going to dispute Mr. Mays' overall claim of representation, I would refer you to the public voting data showing how the citizens of Mason voted specifically on Issue Two. Of the 25 precincts in Mason, 22 voted in favor of the issue. In other words, when the actual issue of legalization of marijuana and by extension its sale and availability was put up to a vote, the majority of Mason voters endorsed it. So it seems to me that to advocate against what the voters clearly approved and made legal is blatant misrepresentation of the voters in the county. The citizens of Mason expressed themselves with their votes, and you can't undo that just because they didn't vote the way that you had hoped. Personally, if marijuana is in Mason, and it is, I would rather have it regulated and generating tax revenue for Mason. And I just, I want to conclude by mentioning that for the last couple of years, it has been lovely having a functional city council that is not constantly fighting or making the local news for all the wrong reasons. So thank you, Mayor Nelson and council members. It is noticed and it is appreciated.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ian Logan. I live at 4630 Woodland Drive, Mason, Ohio 45040. I attended Mason High School from kindergarten through graduation, and thank you to the council for letting me speak today. And I am here to implore the council to allow the zoning of recreational dispensaries because that is the responsible, healthier course of action for our community. It is the course of action that equips our community to fight marijuana abuse. And that may come across as a contradiction, but it truly isn't. The discussion on whether Mason should allow zoning for recreational marijuana is not the same as whether we allow the consumption or the usage of adult-use marijuana. Allowed or not, that's already the case, and it already has been, always has been. Because let's be clear, the current recreational marijuana dispensary in our city is the dealer on the corner. Like 13 years ago, when we had an extremely large, widely-publicized marijuana dealer bust stemming from the core of our community. I'm sure that void has been filled since. We cannot afford to be naive. These street dealers already sell citizens not only unmarked, unsafe marijuana, but a variety of other dangerous substances as well. So rather than helping these illegal businesses by suppressing their competition, rather than standing by as residents flock to the nearest dealer to purchase products that come with significantly higher risks than a lab-tested, labeled marijuana out of a dispensary, I instead ask the city of Mason to step up and provide oversight over the distribution and usage of marijuana in our community by responsibly zoning safer alternatives for our citizens. This isn't about whether marijuana is good or bad, but shining a light into a dark alley that is the illegal drug trade. The Columbus Recovery Center places marijuana usage rates at around 20% of adults. Meth and heroin are like 2%, 1%. Like stats may differ depending on where you look, but anecdotally, kind of lines up with my experience, maybe for you as well. And this indicates to me marijuana is likely the largest market for these street dealers. So by zoning a safer, more convenient alternative for our citizens, we take significant power and influence away from these dealers as their customers go elsewhere. Think of alcohol. Would you rather buy a clear, unmarked bottle of clear liquid, which kind of smells like alcohol, offered up by a sketchy teenager in a Honda Civic? Or would you rather stop by a regulated liquor store, show your ID, and pick up a nice bottle of 70 proof Grey Goose where you know exactly what's in the bottle down to the calorie? Yeah, maybe more expensive, but I'll bet you'd prefer the Grey Goose. Now, let me be clear, I do not advocate for zoning dispensaries on every corner, nor do I advocate for dispensary near our schools. As unfortunately, we already sell plenty of nicotine products near our schools for our kids, and that's a separate discussion that we definitely ought to have. Now, what I am advocating for is limited, responsible implementation of zoning, strategic implementation, one or two dispensaries far away from schools but near commercial hotspot to generate valuable revenue, revenue that directly funds addiction programs, enhances public services, and serves as a community rainy day fund when needed. Because regardless of the decision the council comes to, people will always seek their vices. Prohibiting recreational dispensaries only provides an opportunity for street dealers to thrive in a community without competition. Zoning recreational dispensaries empowers Mason with tools to oversee, enforce, and monitor marijuana use, ultimately taking control away from the dealers and making our community safer in the process. Because why would a dealer want to stay in a community that has taken away their market? Wouldn't they prefer the cities that prohibit the recreational dispensaries as those would offer higher demand and greater profits thanks to a lack of competition? And if you believe addicts will flock to our dispensaries, then let's capitalize on this opportunity to funnel them towards resources for fighting addiction, something that's much harder to do currently. And if you believe zoning dispensaries will smoke up our parks and playgrounds, let's use this tax income to fund enforcement of no-smoking policies that, as far as I'm aware, should already exist. And if you believe marijuana usage is a problem, I implore you to see this as a path towards a solution because decades of harsh enforcement and prohibition has not solved the problem, and we have an opportunity to try something else. So once more, for the last time, I swear, I call on this council to take control of marijuana distribution by zoning recreational dispensaries responsibly and not passing the ordinance as it currently stands. Mason deserves new solutions, new funding, and commitment to proactive control rather than outdated attempts to zone the problem away. Revisit the ordinance and craft a solution which provides tax dollars for critical services, protects our residents, and reduces the power of illegal dealers and the harm they bring to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We can line a couple people up, it might be more efficient to do that. So if you want to speak, we can have a couple people stand over there.
Hi, I'm Barbie Champ, 5205 Spire Oaks Drive. Good evening, Mayor Nelson and members of council. I strongly oppose the proposed marijuana dispensaries in our town. As a concerned citizen, I believe it would have severe negative consequences for our community, particularly our youth. Our schools dare programs teaches kids about the dangers of substance abuse and violence, promoting healthy choices. However, allowing a dispensary would undermine this program's efforts and put our kids at greater risk of substance abuse. In fact, studies have shown that one in six teenagers who try marijuana will become addicted. Personally, I've seen the devastating effects of marijuana use firsthand. Growing up, I watched family members marijuana use led to downward spiral of addiction and heartbreak for our family. This experience has shown me the destructive path that marijuana can lead to, and I fear for the young people in our community who have been tempted to experiment with it. It destroys families and leads to a long line of trauma in its path. Furthermore, a dispensary would alter the fabric of our community, potentially leading to increased crime and traffic and undermining our family-friendly atmosphere. It would also be inconsistent with our community's values and goals. Let's focus on bringing people to our town for positive reasons, not just to purchase marijuana. We should promote healthy choices, support local businesses, and preserve our unique character. I urge you to consider the long-term consequences and prioritize our citizens' well-being and safety, particularly our youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Cheryl Williams, and I live at 3825 Brookhaven Court. I ask you to please vote no on permitting marijuana dispensaries in Mason. Mason is currently known for being desirable, well-kept, safe, and family-friendly. At last month's city council meeting, Mayor Nelson described Mason as upscale. I have to say, I agree with Mayor Nelson that Mason is a high-quality place to live. So why would we ruin all this by bringing drug shops and drug dealers to where we live? Have you ever driven by or walked by a marijuana dispensary in another state or town? They are depressing to even look at and smell horrible. Permitting marijuana dispensaries would normalize and increase drug use, attract drug users to Mason, attract illicit drug dealers looking to expand their customer base, and thus increase all of the negative outcomes associated with such. Secondly, allowing marijuana dispensaries in Mason would be harmful to our children and youth. Dispensaries market to children by selling eye-catching edibles that look like common fun treats and snacks but contain high potency THC. Children accidentally consume these products at home or even at school. The news shares stories of kids being rushed to the hospital after unknowingly ingesting a marijuana gummy or brownie. And regarding adolescents, according to the Developmental Trajectory to Cannabis Use Disorder in the May 2024 volume of the American Journal of Psychiatry, quote, "Adolescent cannabis use is a critical window for cannabis use disorder risk with potential lifelong mental health implications." Quote, "Growing concerns regarding adolescent onset cannabis use relate to its association with the increased prevalence and severity of mental health disorders, including psychosis, depression, anxiety, bipolar disorder, and other substance use disorders." A previous commenter talked about legalized marijuana being safe. Well, let's be clear, the marijuana sold today is not the same as that sold decades ago. It is much stronger. Per the University of Mississippi Potency Monitoring Project, in 1995, the average THC level in cannabis samples seized by the DEA was about 4%, all right? So 1995, 4% THC. In 2015, it was about 10 to 11%. Now, in 2025, per Ohio law, Section 3780.03(c)(21), our law, Ohio law mandates that if we open dispensaries, that marijuana products, quote, "shall be no less than 35%," unquote, THC, 35, quote, "and for extracts, the content limit shall be no less than 90%." 9, 0%. So much for safe. The higher the THC potency, the greater the risk of developing cannabis use disorder and poorer mental health outcomes. In conclusion, we do not want or need marijuana dispensaries in Mason. We do not need the risks, the crime, and the negative impact on our children. What we do need is to protect and preserve this community that we love. I urge this council to stand with the families of Mason and reject marijuana dispensaries. Thank you.
My name is Reverend Christian Mays. I'm the chairman of the Warren County Republican Party. I was introduced a little bit ago with a resolution that the party had passed, but before I get to that, I would just like to thank the council for amending the zoning as you just did, and I would encourage you all to vote for that amendment. The argument was just made that the, that here in Mason, a large percentage voted for the passage of legalized marijuana. And I would say that argument has a lot of fallacies and that, quite frankly, no one that I've spoken with voted to have marijuana in their backyard, let alone in front of their kids or right there on the street in their neighborhoods, as you've already heard. And I would also like to thank our young people for taking a stand and saying something. Thank you. So I would like to read to you the resolution that the Warren County Republican Party did pass, and that is stated as this. The Warren County Republican Party applauds the jurisdictions which have banned marijuana businesses and dispensaries from their communities. Some local governing bodies in Warren County, however, have not acted in response to Issue Two to ban recreational use dispensaries in their jurisdictions, leaving their communities open for recreational dispensaries to locate there. The Warren County Republican Party urges all our jurisdictions to correct this by taking swift official action to ban all marijuana dispensaries. The Ohio General Assembly set zoning standards in response to the 2023 state Issue Two granting every jurisdiction in Ohio home rule authority. That allows you to make local zoning changes limiting or banning marijuana businesses. This exercise of home rule authority requires each local governing body of trustees or council members to take action by holding a public hearing and a public vote. Voting is that action. It is also worth noting that the 2023 state Issue Two did not mandate marijuana sales tax revenue be reserved and distributed to host cities of recreational dispensaries. Ohio's governor and general assembly have prioritized Ohio's general fund and other uses for marijuana sales tax revenue as introduced in SB 56. Warren County is home to some of the best schools, farms, and world-class tourist attractions, local businesses, and global industries. We want to protect Warren County as one of Ohio's fastest-growing and best-run counties to work, play, and raise a family. Warren County is Warren County is the leading economic engine in southwest Ohio. Our local government should not be influenced by the lure of ethereal cannabis tax revenue from the state. The family and societal costs of marijuana far outweigh empty promises of a possible cannabis host community fund. Marijuana facilities drive up taxpayer-funded safety and legal expenses and put families, children, and Warren County values at risk. The Warren County Republican Party urges all our jurisdictions to take swift official action to ban marijuana dispensaries. For those who have done so already, we thank you and urge you to maintain those bans. This resolution was passed March 3, 2025, by official vote of the Warren County Republican Party Executive and Central Committees. Signed Reverend Christian Mays, Warren County GOP Chairman. So I would also like to point out one other thing. We've talked about the possible use of income tax, and as you heard in the resolution, the city of Lebanon is struggling right now to get any income that they gain from their dispensaries. It is a fallacy to think that just because these zoning ordinances, these dispensaries be allowed, that this magical money is going to show up. It hasn't yet, just ask your neighbor to the north in Lebanon. Thank you.
My name is Delibirelli, 6587 Glenstone Way, Mason, Ohio. So this year marks 10 years of my living here in Mason. It's exactly March 16th is when I moved and started working in this area. So I really take a lot of pride with this community, and since then, this is where I've lived, this is where I have invested, and this is where I've encouraged a lot of my friends, family, to continue to invest. And the reason I say that is because of the great things you all do, the great decisions that you all make, and of course, every issue needs to be discussed before you guys can say yes or no, and that's how I see this is one of those issues, that it's only fair to discuss before saying yes or no. And I'm here to make my arguments to vote in favor of the amendment you all have made today. The simple reason, like I said, is that Mason is a very, geographically, it's only a limited space. We are tight on space. There are a lot of good things that we want to do. I'm here with you all in other meetings, and I hear you guys talk about wanting to do so many great things, and sometimes we feel like we are locked in place, in space. We want more space. And for all of the developments, neighborhoods, and everything we have, there is a need and a want for us to do more things, like someone said, maybe around education, other businesses, things like that. And everything that I can talk of can bring more, some kind of like a revenue or something to the city. But this particular one, the marijuana dispensaries, whether it is for recreational or medically used, I don't see the benefit that's directly coming to the city. One. The second is, I'm not trying to be judgmental whether, you know, the issue of good, bad of marijuana, that's already been done at a different level, but I think that's why when the state ordered, it said, let the communities decide on whether they should have them depending on our values, our preferences, what we think is important for us going forward. And definitely, the recreational marijuana use or dispensaries is probably not one of them. The only one I would love that is as a real estate investor, but still, my conscience does not let me do that. As an investor, yes, I love it. I love the idea. My prices are going to go up, I like that, but as someone who lives and values in this community, I don't see a foreseeable value to the community. The third thing is that there is a reason why, long ago, we adopted that whether it is from a school or a church or at a certain distance, we don't want to have any liquor stores or alcohol retail shops. And that's exactly the same thing around this one. There is a reason why we want this to be separated from a community that values a lot around education, knowledge, schools. Mason today thrives, we spend at least 30% more on a home in Mason compared to the neighboring cities, because this is Mason and because here, education is valued a lot. The school, the communities are valued a lot, and I think we should try to preserve that. And tonight, I request all of you to vote in favor of the amendment you all have made today, and obviously, my argument is not based on the judgment of marijuana, good, bad, that's not it. I'm just looking at the value of something like this to our community. Thank you all.
Whether it's increased crime rates, more frequent car crashes, or the family-friendly environment of Mason at risk. Oh, my name is Brenda Sharma, and do you know my address? 5333 Mapledale Way. We all have our reasons against marijuana. Now, you might be thinking, why is a high school student here advocating against marijuana, knowing it doesn't affect me? Well, it affects my community, and I'm here fighting for what I think will be beneficial for my community, a ban on marijuana. Well, there have been countless reasons stated on why marijuana is not suitable for a city like Mason, and to add to that reason, I'm here presenting oral health. When people think of the negative effects of marijuana, their brain automatically goes to places such as mental health or the outward look of the community, but no one really stops to think of what is just as important right in front of them, the health of the human body. Marijuana affects one's oral health in many ways. One of the main ways for oral health is periodontitis. Periodontitis is gum disease, and that is when the soft tissue around the gums get damaged. If that goes untreated, it could lead to damage to the bone around the teeth, which could lead to possible loosening of the teeth or even fully losing it. The THC in marijuana reduces saliva production, and as one of my peers said before, saliva is so important for the oral system because it washes away bacteria and bad germs. If the saliva production is reduced in one's mouth, then it can lead to bacteria growing and thriving. If this bacteria can thrive in one's mouth, it could lead to infections. These infections can not only stay in the oral cavity, but can grow to other parts of the body, possibly leading in heart disease, stroke, weakening of the immune system, and sometimes even diabetes. With increase of these diseases and health issues, it will also lead an increase of hospital visits. We see this in an article, "Annals of Internal Medicine: Emergency Department Visits Linked to Cannabis Use." This article highlights the increase in emergency visits related to emergency visits linked to marijuana in the emergency room. This only exemplifies the reason that we're here to say. Just as smoking tobacco does, smoking marijuana causes staining to the teeth. Staining is obviously not pleasing to the eye, but it's much more than just that. Staining can hide signs of cavities and early signs of gum disease, and as I said before, if these go untreated, it could lead to much more than just the oral cavity. Marijuana cannot only permanently damage the body, but it could also kill it. When you look at it from this aspect, you realize that adding these dispensaries will not only be bad for our community, but it could also lead to the loss of our fellow citizens. These harmful substances are so bad for everyone in many ways and so bad for our community too. This doesn't just affect the people who take it or consume it, but it affects all of us because us as a city of Mason are one. We all advocate for the same things, whether there could be some disagreements, but we all want the better of Mason. We all hope that Mason grows and thrives as time goes. Whatever affects one's isn't in Mason affects all of us, so we can't just sit back and watch this happen. So we're here taking action, advocating for what I think is beneficial for our city, presenting our issues in hopes for finding a solution. Thank you.
If I can just remind everyone, if it's already been said, you probably don't need to repeat it, just to keep it moving along. Thank you.
Hello, mayor, members of the city council. My name is Janice Roder. I live at 2706 Ivy Farm Court in Mason, and I am here also in support of the ordinance that would ban dispensaries here within the city limits of Mason. As our community continues to prioritize safety, family values, health, and economic development, it is essential that we remain proactive in ensuring that businesses operating within our city limits reflect these priorities. Now, I am a licensed physician here in the state of Ohio, and I am a board-certified pediatrician, so I am here with my concerns primarily with regard to the health and safety ramifications of children. And I'm sad to say that I cannot accept that we would agree that whether you buy at a dispensary or on the street, that we should accept marijuana in any form as far as its health concerns. So does marijuana have proven negative effects on the body? We've talked about it, it absolutely does. It's a resounding yes, it's well documented, it's well studied. It has effects on the heart, the lungs, and chronic lung disease, on the brain, particularly the brain of developing children. It has effects on mental health by increased anxiety, psychosis, and a documented exponential increase in schizophrenia in marijuana users. And also, think about pregnancy. More and more women are using marijuana as it becomes more readily available and socially acceptable, and that causes impaired fertility and damage to the developing baby's brain, as well as compromising parental skills often. And it's not just on the users who are affected, it's the families and it's the children. Secondhand marijuana smoke, like we have seen for many decades and have tried to eradicate cigarette smoke, now we're going to allow another toxic carcinogen into the lung of secondhand smoke breathers, especially in closed spaces like vehicles. We don't want to smell this behavior either in our streets or in our parks. The Ohio Children's Hospital Association, American Academy of Pediatrics, and pediatricians across the state opposed issue two and continue to warn about the dangerous effects of marijuana on children's developing bodies, their brains, their nervous systems, their emotional health, and their academic performance. There's a principle in medicine, and it's called the dose makes the poison, and that's exactly right. What is safe for an adult, it can be highly toxic to a small child and have elastic effects. There's lots of data from those states that have legalized marijuana for years. The pediatric emergency department visits, as has been said, and poison control centers have increased rates of cannabis-related incidences. There was one particular study I just have to share about the poison control centers taking calls on cannabis-related cases. In a period from 2016 to 2023, there was a 163% increase in cannabis-related calls, all told, but there was a 469% increase in cannabis calls related to children under age five. We can't accept this. Older children too, who come to the emergency department, are more likely to arrive by ambulance and to have longer stays. And who of you has heard of the new cannabis hyperemesis disorder? It's very prevalent now among adult adolescent cannabis users, where they have chronic and severe vomiting. So this is not Mason, this is not the example that we want to set, this is not our vision for a community focused on walking trails, exercise, great schools, and public safety. So I urge you to enact a ban on all cannabis dispensaries in Mason. Thank you.
Julie Seitz, 5532 Winding Cape Way, Mason, Ohio 450540. I'm appearing this evening, council, in my capacity as the president of the Deerfield Township Board of Trustees. I originally came to voice my opposition to 25-11, but given the amendments, I'm now here to ask and support, and ask you to vote in support of 25-11 as amended. Deerfield Township has been very proactive on the issue of marijuana establishments. Since 2016, Deerfield Township has a resolution that prohibits marijuana businesses within any zoning districts within Deerfield Township. Marijuana businesses are defined as any business, laboratory, or other enterprise that cultivates, processes, distributes, or sells marijuana or any derivative of marijuana. The trustees approved this resolution in 2016 in response to feedback from residents that they did not want marijuana businesses in their backyard. More recently, the current board of trustees also voted to limit the expansion of vape shops and smoke shops within Deerfield Township. In 2018, trustee heading came before this council to encourage consistency in the approach to these types of issues between our two communities. So the amendments to 25-11 go a long way in that regard. The fact that voters legalize marijuana at the state level does not change the fact that we believe that our residents do not want those marijuana businesses in their backyards. That means both the residents of Mason and the residents of Deerfield Township. Given that Mason and Deerfield Township are adjacent communities, our interests are intricately intertwined, residents of both of our communities work in the other community, dine in the other community, go between the communities, and therefore, we think there should be a consistent approach to this. The amendments that you've made tonight to 25-11 go a long way in that regard, so I would urge you to adopt as amended 25-11. Personally, as a former prosecutor, magistrate judge, and currently is the chief compliance officer for a provider of addiction treatment services, I've seen the devastation that recreational marijuana use can have in a community. For these reasons, I would strongly urge the council to adopt 25-11 as amended and prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of Mason. Thank you so much.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. So glad to see such a wonderful crowd here. My name is Kathy Grossman. I live at 4533 Morris Court here in Mason. When this issue came up in 2018, I was actually sitting at the dais, and I worked very hard with council to pass a ban to disallow any medical marijuana dispensaries from locating in Mason. At that time, the issue is marijuana, medical marijuana, and I don't want to debate the efficacy of that or whether or not we think that marijuana is safe. In theory, some say that it's safe, but in practical experience, many of us know that it's not, and many of us have personally experienced the negative things that come along with drug addiction and marijuana use, and, you know, folks don't want to admit that it's a gateway drug, but experience tells so many of us that it is. I want to thank you for approving the amendment to tonight's ordinance 25-11, and I do hope you will pass it as amended and that you will maintain a permanent ban on marijuana businesses in the city of Mason. I was taking down some notes because I was trying to think of some unique things to say. You may not know this, but the number one industry in Warren County is actually tourism, and Mason accounts for about 25% of that, at least prior to the expansion of the tennis tournament, so I'm going to think that that percentage is going to increase over time now that we are expanding that campus. Mason's access to Interstate 71 and 75 make it a prime target for marijuana businesses. And, you know, we want tourists to come in and enjoy the amenities that we have in our community, but we want to attract the kind of tourists that are going to go to Kings Island, are going to go to the tennis tournament, are going to spend money at local businesses, not at dispensaries. And you have to remember that these dispensaries make a very narrow segment of the population rich, but the rest of us pay the societal cost, and if you have been a family member of someone who has struggled with addiction and was once just a quintessential silly pothead, you know that the family... once just a quintessential silly pothead, you know that the familial costs are astronomical. I've never really said this in public, but I had the honor and responsibility to escort a family member to rehab. And it was a miracle, by the grace of God, we got him on the airplane. He was a dead man walking, and he was just a silly teenager who started with pot. And it's taken him years and years and years to rehabilitate and to get back on his feet again. And so I appreciate the earnest comments of the young man who thinks that maybe by having marijuana dispensaries that we could regulate it and it would be safer. But that's just for people over 25 who want to legally buy it in a dispensary. I've raised six teenagers, and I'm pretty sure that people over 21 that buy that pot in the dispensaries are going to sell it to our high school kids. And our high school kids are still going to get it, one way or another, and our junior high kids, and maybe even younger, and hopefully never anyone even younger than that. So, you know, I just urge you to lean into our experience, those of us who are speaking against it. And let's make sure that that beautiful M logo, that Mason logo that we have up on the wall, that that continues to represent Mason families, family values, our strong schools, our beautiful amenities, our parks, our culture of wellness, all of the things that we think of when we think of Mason, not marijuana. And I thank you very much for your time.
My name is Prasad Koneru, and my address is 4524 Ashfield Place. So thank you, council members and all the city officials, for making amendment this today. But I also wanted to say a few words, not everything that everyone already said. And this is about, in our Mason schools, the kids are taught in the DARE program that effects, like bad effects, of drugs and other things that cause violence. So there was a paper published by DARE, and it is called like "DARE: America Position Paper on Marijuana Legalization." And it is about the effects of what happened in Colorado in the first year. And I just read out, "So, calls to the poison centers skyrocketed in the first year. Incidents involving kids coming to schools with marijuana candy and vaporizers have sold. Marijuana can be addictive and dangerous. So simply put, accessibility to marijuana dispensaries would drastically increase marijuana use and use disorder rates, as well as hamper public safety and health at a cost to the society in lost productivity, impaired driving, healthcare, and other costs." So in general, businesses established in a city or in a neighborhood are for the benefit and to cater to the needs of the city and the community. In this case, dispensaries are not really the need of the citizens of our city. So I really am thankful that you're considering to oppose it, and thank you very much for everything that you are doing for our city.
My name is Greg May. I'm an attorney at Ice Miller in Columbus, Ohio. I live at 3325 Toyota Run Boulevard in Hilliard. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about this ordinance. Our firm has been working with a client that's been interested in locating a dispensary here in the city since about September. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on this. When we first started working with the city, the staff indicated support and met with our client on this project. The city signed a zoning form that allowed the state of Ohio to lock down a dispensary for our client here in Mason provisionally. And the city indicated to the state of Ohio on that zoning process form that a zoning change was ongoing and was anticipated to be made that would allow adult-use dispensaries and dual-use dispensaries in Mason, and it was expected to pass in May. So when we learned that the city had made an about-face, suddenly, just in the last couple of weeks apparently, it caused us, obviously, some surprise. And we think the city is making a rash decision here. It's also worth noting that this went before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted to support the repeal of the medical marijuana prohibition in Mason. And as many people have mentioned already tonight, the voters in Mason approved Issue Two. And not just in the county, but in Mason and in the specific precinct where this location would be located, 63% of the residents voted for Issue Two. Our firm has been, has had consistent dialogue with the city and requested the ability to meet with leadership and council and address any concerns, but over the last couple of weeks, the communication has fell silent. We understand there's opposition to this, and that's not a surprise, and it's common. This is a controversial issue, and there's many aspects to it. But I want to tell you that you have a chance to do something powerful here, but it's not what you think. All right? There's a lot of the objection that we've heard here tonight seems to be based on an assumption that marijuana is not in this city. As one of the gentlemen pointed out, it is, and it's been here for a long time. The question is, where are people buying it? It's been talked about, the black market here, but what if I were to tell you that it's actually worse than that? Okay? These products that I have here were purchased this afternoon right here in Mason. There's at least three different places selling these products in Mason right now. These products are marketed toward children. Someone mentioned the potency of THC. This particular pack of candies that look like Skittles has 1,000 milligrams of THC in it. That's 10 times more than any product you can buy in our licensed dispensaries right now. So what you have is an opportunity to allow your customers to buy tested, regulated, safe products that cannot be marketed to children, that have child-resistant packaging on them, that have clear labeling, labeling restrictions, all that, okay? Otherwise, it's not the black market necessarily where your citizens are going to buy this. These are, these look like candies, and there's no marketing restrictions whatsoever on the sale of these. More importantly, there's no age restrictions. So if we're concerned about what's falling into the hands of our children, this is what's falling into the hands of your children. It's not the marijuana in the dispensaries. That stuff is taxed, and it's expensive. No one's buying it to resell it. This is what's out there right now. I have a receipt showing where this was purchased, in Mason. So I asked council to take their time with this decision, allow, weigh all the different aspects of what you're doing here tonight, and take your time. We'd love the opportunity to address your concerns, and we ask you to table this motion until there's an opportunity for more feedback. One final point I would like to make, someone mentioned the taxes that the city could make. You're not making any taxes on this. All right? Senate Bill 56, which was just passed by the Senate and went over to the House, yeah, originally, they wanted to pull back the city's, the host community fund, but because of feedback, they actually retreated on that. And the bill that they sent to the House preserves the tax code as it was passed by the voters. More importantly, House Bill 160, which was just introduced, also preserves some portion of that tax money for the host community funds. Both Senator McCauley and Speaker Huffman have both indicated that they're in support of preserving the host community fund. So I'm not saying this is about money, but there is significant tax revenue that you as a city could collect while at the same time providing safer products to your citizens than what they currently have access to in Mason. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to show these to anybody if they would like to see them, like, or I can leave now.
David Williams, 3825 Brookhaven Court. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight because I've spoken a couple of times already to council, but I just wanted to follow up on that. I would hope that legal counsel of dispensary would not have sway on the council, which would counter from what the community has expressed tonight, which is to have no dispensaries here in Mason. Just because something is regulated doesn't make it safe. Just because something is legal doesn't make it good or right for our community. In my write-ups, I said, "We don't want adult bookstores here in Mason." It's legal. You can go up to Monroe. You can go up to Monroe for marijuana as well. But that's not the values that this community upholds. This isn't the community we all moved here for. And I know that if we have marijuana dispensaries in this community, that all of the issues that we discuss, all the bad, negative effects, will be here in larger numbers because accessibility increases, the availability increases the usage, and it increases the usage among our children. And I'll just keep it at that, and I hope that the will of the people and not the will of outside legal firms and dispensaries have any sway on the council. Thank you.
I want to thank you guys for letting me speak here today, and I would like to vote against marijuana stores being built in Mason. Marijuana is really dangerous and can kill people, and people buying excessive amounts could also be really bad and cause diseases and affect their memory and make them have strokes or heart attacks. And not just marijuana being dangerous, but fentanyl can also be laced into marijuana, which is considered the most deadly drug in the U.S. According to Rehab.com, fentanyl can be laced in at least 50% of marijuana, and if someone takes that dose, even two milligrams of fentanyl can be life-threatening and can kill you. So all I wanted to say was, I advise you guys to not support marijuana dispensaries being built in Ohio.
So my name is Joe Kramer. I live in Deerfield Township, 4192 South Shore Drive. And I have five children that either have graduated or still, one more that's still at Mason City Schools. Yeah, I do support the revised amendment to ban dispensaries. I guess I'll just get to the point, what's better, to be sober or to be drunk or high? And here's some five anecdotes. One is the city superintendent, Jonathan Cooper, says, "He sets out drug expectations or expectations for all the teachers," and this is the "drug-free workplace" document that he republishes every year for employees. Get to, just the main quote is, "The board endeavors to provide a safe workplace for all employees, realizing that the use of drugs and alcohol can endanger the health and safety and well-being of the non-user as well as the user." And then Dr. Cooper also makes the same expectations for the students as well. So you've heard from several of the students. Couple of anecdotes. One of my daughters, my 27-year-old daughter graduated from high school, well, a few years ago. She's been in the college, I guess, area or the life for the last eight years, either as a student or as a missionary counseling and helping students that are, let's say, wayward. I asked her just what she would thought, or what she thought of the dispensaries. She said, "Feels like it would draw the wrong type of people," as in being unsafe. I said, "Well," she said, "where there is a liquor store or the neighborhood drug dealer," she lived in Columbus Downtown Off Campus and Tempe Off Campus, "there is traffic." I asked her to elaborate. She said, "Well, they're not the same people that go to the Walgreens." Okay. I asked my son, who graduated three years ago, he's in college. He said, "He knows some people, some of his friends from sports did smoke pot in high I asked him how he feels, and he said, "Aw, damn." But he said, "He respected them for their athletic skills, but he did not respect," he was trying to be diplomatic. He said, "Well, I don't really respect them because they're potheads." Okay, all right. I have a family member in my own family. He smoked recreationally since high school. He still does. He's my age. When he attends family gatherings, he goes off to a private, leaves the family gathering for a half hour, does the thing, waits for his, you know, he comes back a half hour later, sometimes with another friend. Why does he not come, why doesn't he just smoke pot right in front of us? He knows it. We know it. It's a matter of respect that we, when you want to get high or drunk intentionally, you lose respect from either your family members or your business coworkers or whoever. We still love them. I mean, I respect them for other things, but just not for that thing. If I were to meet any of the council members, or you were to meet me on the street randomly, and my eyes are glassy, or I'm kind of not walking in a straight line, we should lose respect for that person, for me or for you. We all know that. Summary, "We look up to those who in our community embody virtue. While we all fail, sometimes we have vices, we fail in virtue sometimes, we nonetheless should earnestly help our neighbor or brother to live to a higher standard. For example, being honest, not lying. To work diligently, or to help our brother say, 'Hey, stop wasting time.' To carry out our duties as father and mother, as opposed to abandoning our duties to our children. To be sober, not drunk or high, one is better than the other. And also, to help people when they're hurt or they, when they are drunk or high, that we help them, not encourage them in that behavior." So thank you.
Nice to see everyone. My name is Margie Murray. I live at 5625 Richmond Park Drive in Mason. And I was looking over the ordinances here and noticed, if you look at your paper here, it says, "Ordinance 2025-23: Approval of a Conditional Use Permit to Allow a Convalescent Nursing and Rest Home on R3-Zone Property," and it gives the address. And then the next one, number 12, "Approval of a Conditional Use Permit to Allow Two Residential Units in a B1-Zone Building," and with the address. And then the next one, too, has specifics on it, too. But I noticed ordinance 25-11 doesn't have any specifics on it. So I guess I'm just wondering why you don't have an address or what the purpose of this ordinance is for. Is it marijuana, passing the right to have a marijuana dispensary in Mason? Which kind of, in a way, conceals it from the public, it appears. And I think people would like to be informed on what is being discussed here at council so they can come and be represented in the city. So I just wanted to, I'm just curious as to why that's not on the ordinance. And my other point is, too, it's kind of interesting to me that if you apply for a job, especially higher-level jobs that require a lot of responsibility and diligence, if you have marijuana in your system, you will not get the job. And THC, I think, I'd say, active ingredient, will stay in your system for 30 days. So it's not like alcohol, that alcohol will pass through if you're an occasional drinker, you know, you don't have a drinking problem. But if you use marijuana, marijuana products, even gummies, it stays in your system, and you will be denied employment. So I don't understand how that coincides with a community that is bringing in and wanting to attract high-level businesses and technology and things like that into the city and this area, and wants to allow something that will and wants to allow something that will completely contradict what they want to represent as a community and also to encourage in society. So that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Hari Koduru. Thanks for the opportunity. I live in Rosebrook, 5622 Rosemont Lane, Mason, Ohio, 45040. I have one point here. I've been living here for 11 years in the city. I came from Charlotte, North Carolina. Couple of things is, everybody talked about qualitatively. I want to talk a little bit quantitative. Since I came here, the ranking for best places to live for in Mason is like early 20s, 14. I remember seeing number 14, number 18, number 17. Two years ago, it was four. I think last year, number five. I remember reading somewhere that is 57 KPI behind that number, four, number five. And these KPIs are like a social vulnerability, a better place to live, quality of life, dependability, desirability, et cetera, et cetera. There are 57 KPIs. You guys done a great job in the last 15, 20 years to get to that top five or top 50. And it's easy to compare your 57 KPI with any other town or hundreds of towns across the United States. And then just what this will do to your ranking. So basically, just look at quantitatively and you'll get the answer. I support your amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else want to come to the podium? All right. I would like to close the public hearing at 8:32. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading. So moved. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry, my notes are wrong. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
As amended. Motion to adopt as amended. A second. Okay. We have time for council discussion. I'd like to say, we received hundreds of emails against dispensaries. And I think we only received like three, four, the dispensary. The thing we had to consider, or I had to consider, I should say, is that even though the state, the residents of the state passed Issue 2 to allow for the use of marijuana, that doesn't necessarily mean that they want it in their backyard. And I have a quick example. I was talking to an individual who is for, was for passing Issue 2, for the dispensaries. And when I told them, you know, this could go, there is a location by your house that this could actually be built. The first thing that they said, it was not my house. Can't be built by my house. So the question is, well, whose house then should it be built by? And, you know, we don't want, we have great property values here in Mason, and we don't want the decline of the property values. And I've heard from a number of realtors who pulled me aside and said, hey, it's going to hurt our property values. You know, we're a conservative community with family values, and I am going to vote no on this issue. Would anyone else like to comment?
Can I take one second just to clarify for council's benefit on the yes/no? The question is going to come up at some point when you vote on this. It's been, the amendment has already passed, which means the ordinance that's before you would, among other things in the zoning code, it would prohibit the adult-use marijuana uses. So I am only saying this to urge council members to be clear. As you get to the vote part, if you vote yes, you are voting to adopt the ordinance as it's been amended, which means it would prohibit the marijuana businesses. I just, these things get flipped, so sometimes it's confusing. If you vote no, you would be voting against the entire ordinance, marijuana and the other, you know, the flood regulations, all the other things. So I just want council to keep that in mind as you get to the point for vote.
So I think I should have said I'm voting no to the dispensary, yes to the ordinance, to clarify. Okay. Councilmember Hackey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, especially to the young people in the audience. You came up and spoke. I admire your courage. I admire your dedication to what you're talking in favor or not in favor of. It's just, it's wonderful to see you getting involved already at your age. I appreciate you coming up here. It was mentioned that we've made a rash decision, and I would like to counter that. I spent a lot of time looking into this issue. When it first, you know, a year ago, we placed a moratorium on this, so we had time to understand the legislation, to understand what's going to happen at the state level, to understand how that will affect us here at the city level and what my responsibilities would be in terms of what I will or will not vote for. You know, one of the things I want to clarify is, this does not make marijuana use or possession or personal growth illegal in our city. This says we're not going to put a dispensary in our city if that's how we end up voting. So, you know, it's, when we talk about family values, when we talk about what do we want for our kids? I have no issue with marijuana, with it being legalized, with it being used. It's a personal choice. And responsible use or medical use, there are very valid reasons for that. And I absolutely am in support of that. I know as a veteran, I've worked with a lot of people who have PTSD. They have a choice of either very strong drugs that they have to wean off or some of them get the same benefits from marijuana use. There are very valid reasons for it. But I've read a lot of studies. I know studies can be skewed to say what we want them to say. And there's a lot of good information out there. But this was not a rash decision by any means, and I just want to make sure that's clear. You know, we're doing a lot with our downtown committee to improve our Mason Mile. And one of the things we want to do is make it family-friendly. We want to make it walkable. Do we want children and families walking past a dispensary? My opinion is absolutely not. It was mentioned that we could do this very strategically. And that was actually where I was initially on this issue. But when it came down to it, what are the benefits? The question was, what does it bring to our city? And quite honestly, the revenue isn't guaranteed. We don't have a sales tax in the city of Mason. All we would get would be payroll tax and maybe some money if the governor gets his way. We might not get any. But the fact is, I don't see the value of this to our city. I respect those who are in favor of the dispensaries, and I respect your opinions on that. I did look at the voting record, and it is very clear that the vast majority of Mason voted in favor of this. But as the mayor mentioned, when it comes to putting it in somebody's backyard, that becomes a different story. And it becomes very difficult to manage, to regulate, and to make it a responsible way of dealing with this. And so for all those reasons, oh, the other thing I want to say is, the residents, I know there were some concerns about some outside interests, some outside influence. That's not a factor. I'd be perfectly honest, I don't care what people outside the city have to say with regard to how we do or do not vote on this. This is a city of Mason issue, and I understand we have our neighboring communities, and we want to be respectful of them. But in the end, this is Mason. This is what's good for our city and our residents and our property owners and our businesses. And that's who I'm here to represent, and that's who I'm here to work for. So because of that, all those reasons, I will be voting in favor of the ordinance as amended, not permitting dispensaries in our city.
Councilmember Gibson.
There are thousands of reasons why I love this city. I've been here for 30 years, and I love this city. I have been very humbled over the last 30 days with all of the outpouring from residents of Mason and all of the letters and emails that you have sent to all of us here. I just wanted to thank you. That's what a community does. A community lets their voices be heard and stands up for what they believe in. And I will be supporting the new amended version. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Strickila.
You know, this was a pretty, I think, easy decision for me. Similar to what Councilmember Hackey mentioned, it was just looking at what value would this actually bring to the city. So, you know, I had my decision a couple of weeks ago. But I do want to say thank you to the young men and women who came and spoke up, similar to Councilmember Gibson, and just appreciated what it took for you to come and really appreciate you voicing your opinion for us, letting us know and standing up for what you believe in. So appreciate that. I'll be voting yes to prohibit.
Councilmember Spade.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several things I want to say. First of all, I do want to say thank you to everyone who has responded, whether you're for or against the dispensaries in Mason. I always have been surprised in my career here on council that we don't have as much citizen input on a lot of the issues that we consider. So this one was, I greatly appreciated that we heard from so many people. I think that it's important, in my position here on council, that I don't vote personally the way I feel about something, but I vote to represent the interest of the citizens and what's in the best interest for the city of Mason. And as the mayor pointed out, the majority of the communication that came to us, it was from people who did not want to have these dispensaries in our community. But I do want to just give you a couple opinions that I have because I feel strongly about this. I do think when we get some of these issues from the state, a lot of people really don't understand what's in the issue, and they don't really understand what they're voting for. So even though the majority of people in the state and in Mason may have voted to legalize both medical and adult-use cannabis, I'm not sure that they always understood what they were voting for. I have people that will call me the day of the election, just tell me how to vote. So I think that's one thing I wish we could improve at the state levels to make some of these issues a little bit clearer when we are voting for them. I do think, and this is my opinion, when people voted to legalize marijuana, I don't think they thought beyond that about where the marijuana was going to be, either processed, cultivated, or sold. And I honestly think, my personal opinion is, that most people do not want it, as the mayor said, on their doorstep or right next door to where they live. The other thing I wanted to bring a point up is, I wondered about how much money would we actually get from this? What kind of revenue? And so I contacted the mayor in Lebanon, and they've had their dispensary since medical marijuana was passed. And so I said, Mayor Messer, I said, how much money have you made off this? What's the tax revenue? And he goes, well, that's a good question. I'm going to have to look that up. And he got back with me about a couple of weeks later. And so this is what he said to me. He goes, so to answer your question, we have received nothing, and the state is trying to keep it that way. So I don't think we're going to get rich off any kind of revenue if we have a dispensary in the city. And that's my personal opinion. I also want to say, this past Thursday, I attended an event at Great Wolf Lodge. And I was walking into the event at nine o'clock in the morning in the parking lot, and I smelled that skunk smell that's so prevalent anymore anywhere you go. And I kind of started looking around, and I walked past a car, and it was a very young man sitting in his car, nine o'clock in the morning, smoking a joint. And I just thought to myself, that is so sad. And that is my opinion. That is so sad. So the only other thing that I want to say that is, again, my opinion, is that to the attorney who is representing the client that wants to open the dispensary in Mason, I'm glad you got up and talked about all these products that are available to our kids possibly right now. Because honestly, I don't think I'm that much aware that those kind of products are available. So maybe everyone in this audience needs to contact your legislators and do something to ban those products out of our stores. Because I don't think locally we're able to do that. I could be wrong about that. But I think at the state level, maybe they could ban something like that. And if those kind of products are available to our kids, then we need to stop that as well. So again, that's my opinion. You all know how I feel. I made the motion to change or amend our ordinance so that we would ban all dispensaries here in Mason. And I think that's probably in the best interest of Mason. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Chance.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. I echo a lot of what everyone said in regards to the youth and everyone that got up and spoke. I'm not ashamed to say that I am a big fan of medical marijuana. I've seen it, you know, we talked about the veteran community with PTSD. But I also don't allow propaganda and fear-mongering to kind of change my mind. I spent four hours at the Alzheimer's clinic right here in Mason, Ohio, with two doctors, basically describing our cannabinoid system and what medical marijuana can do for their cognitive thinking as long and also reducing tremors. I also have some personal friends with a son that has epilepsy, and I've watched it reduce his seizures by 50 to 80%. I've also seen, personally witnessed, one of my best friends went to the doctor for neuropathy. He had every medicine possibly prescribed to him, possibly prescribed. And he could not, the only thing that helped him was medical marijuana. So I'm going to get that out there. And also, I'd like to dispel kind of a rumor that actually kind of cracked me up, is the one reason why I wanted dispensaries in Mason is because I was going to benefit financially. That's not a rumor. It's a blatant lie. Because I've never looked into investing. I don't even know the first step of how to do that, and I've never done it. So I would like to clear the air on that because it's a blatant lie, and it's a shame some of the folks out there that are spreading that lie. And the other part of it, too, is the hypocrisy. And to council, you're spot on. I mean, we have seen, you've seen those products in a lot of stores in Mason. You failed to mention, though, you can go to almost every liquor store in Mason and get a seltzer with 10 milligrams of THC in it. And every liquor store in Mason. So we stand up here and we talk about what we're talking about, and right here, there's dispensaries already in Mason, Ohio. That's, I mean, that is the raw fact of it. I don't like it. And to councilmember Spade, we should figure that out because there's no regulation on that stuff. There's no age requirement on that stuff, and that's shameful. And that's not good. And we need to do something about that. And another part of hypocrisy that I don't like is, I have an office in downtown Mason. My warehouse is right on the outskirts of Mason, and I pass a methadone clinic every single day. Does anyone here know what methadone is? It's synthetic heroin. And they have yard signs, yard signs out in front of it that says, Methadone Clinic. So we have active addicts coming to the city of Mason to get synthetic heroin. We all know the scourge of what opioids have done on society. And that is equally as shameful, that there's not an uproar and people going crazy over that. Because I don't, and I don't, by the great, I don't know what it was, but I've had three heroin addicts live with me. Three, and they are very, very manipulative. They know what to do to get their fix. They know exactly what to do. And it wasn't family members, so hopefully nobody will take that back and start spreading those lies. But that's the type of stuff, and so I want to be very clear. I am a medical marijuana guy. However, I don't know if recreational is good for the city of Mason. I think we all eloquently said that, and we understand that. However, there are numbers that were produced in November of '23. However, there are numbers that were produced in November of '23, 22 out of 25 precincts passed it. I think sometimes these decisions are bigger than seven people. And I hear a lot of, and so, again, I'm not sitting here saying I'm a proponent of recreational marijuana, but this, it could be bigger than the seven of us. And I would encourage anyone out there, if, if that's what we want to do, take it away from us. Do something in the fall about it. And so, I will be voting yes in regards on the amended, on the amended, what we talked about earlier. However, it's not, it's, again, I don't want to convolute because the states, you know, they're, you know, they're good at keeping our money and they're good at tying these two issues together. And to me, they're completely separate. So, again, I will be voting yes on the amended ordinance, but again, there's some issues that are bigger than seven of us. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Bennett?
So, for some reason, I received many more supportive emails, but I have to say, I received, I counted this morning, I have 221 emails in my inbox. Of those, 24 were supportive of allowing marijuana-based businesses of some sort in Mason. So, it's still 90 percent of the messages that I received oppose businesses here. I brand as a candidate who would listen to the community and that is what I believe this job is, is to listen to everyone and it is to consider what is best for the community as a whole. I also want to point out that a group of residents started a change.org petition and that petition has received well over 1,100 signatures. Now, there's no way to determine how many people signed who actually are residents of Mason because anyone can sign those, but that's still a very significant number. I do want to point out and agree with, with Ashley that there are some things that I heard tonight that really concern me, inconsistencies in the way that we talk about marijuana, alcohol, and nicotine. Marijuana, alcohol, nicotine, all cause harm to human bodies. They all cause harm to unborn children, they all cause addiction, they all destroy families and relationships. And yet, I can walk down the street and I can buy wine at the UDF. I can also go and get nicotine and wine at the pharmacy at Walgreens. Where's the outcry about that? Why would we treat marijuana differently? If we're gonna allow people to make adult decisions about marijuana or about nicotine and alcohol, why would we treat marijuana differently? To me, that is inconsistent. I also want to point out that you, many of you have complained, "I don't like the smell, I don't like smelling it everywhere I go." Well, it's not legal here now for people to sell it or buy it and you still smell it. So, that's not gonna change, no matter what we do tonight. It's here until we decide to do something different. I agree with Barb and Ashley that we need to do something about the ready availability of nicotine and of THC in products that currently aren't regulated. That very much concerns me and I think Dr. Roderer's comments about the harm that's caused to young developing brains are really important to take into account. I don't want it to be accessible to young people. As an adult, what you do in your own home, that's fine. However, I do want to say that ultimately what swayed me was the conversations that we had. I had an opportunity to meet with a number of residents who were able to explain and describe their experiences, their backgrounds, and the reasons why they are concerned about these businesses here in Mason. And that's what we need. We need to have more conversations with each other. We need to sit down across the table, ask each other questions, hear each other's stories, and begin to understand what's behind a position. So, I'm going to support the amended zoning ordinances, but I do think this isn't, this needs to be an ongoing conversation.
All right, it's time for roll call.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Jeff? Yes, right? That's what I was saying. Yes, yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickla?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
All right. All right, we are on to ordinance 2025-23 and this is a first reading.
Mayor, can I ask that we take a little five-minute bathroom break, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
ICRC, are you ready? All right. All right, next on the agenda is ordinance 2025-23 and this is the first reading. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Approval of a conditional use permit to allow a convalescent nursing and rest home on a R3-zoned property at 6546 Mason Montgomery Road, Heritage Presbyterian Church.
All right, Eric?
Would like to set the public hearing for April 14th.
Ordinance 2025-24, this is also a first reading. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Approval of a conditional use permit to allow two residential units in a B1-zoned building at 216 Kings Mills Road.
Eric?
Again, would like to set the public hearing for April 14th.
Right, ordinance 2025-25, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Approval of the replat for Kings Island Technical Center Block B.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. This replat essentially takes some property from one parcel and gives it to another. It's an area that's below an overhead power line easement for a future parking lot expansion. Both lots do meet the HT1 zoning district and this went to Planning Commission in March and was recommended for approval. So, with that, 2025-25 is recommended. Contingent on them submitting to the map room for their review and approval as well.
All right, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickla?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-26, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Barrett Paving Materials, Inc. for the 2025 street maintenance asphalt program in the amount of $2,010,589.
Eric?
Yep, Mayor, just by way of reminder, there's seven ordinances here in total that have to do with the paving program. And I just want to congratulate both council as well as the engineering department. It has taken several years, but I'm just a, a big fan of how we finally worked this out with the set-aside program. It's a way that allows us to keep what is one of the major investments the city makes each year in our roads, to keep up with that kind of crushing demand of the ongoing maintenance, staying ahead of that, that expense curve. But also, I think we've finally found a way to take advantage of market fluctuations to really up that investment when the time's right. And that's what I think you'll see evidenced in all seven of these ordinances. We can go through each of those as you, as you take action on them. If you have any particular details, Kurt and his staff have really, I think, come up to bat in making sure that what is a sophisticated idea has, has worked out extremely well for the city.
All right, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call.
Real quick, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I will echo, I'm not gonna take a lot of time here, but what Eric said, that, this is always kind of, we, we had a finance committee meeting earlier and that's one of the best things I love about this city is we are forward-thinking and we, it's not, there's no rash decisions when it comes to our paving program and we do an excellent job of making sure those buckets are filled when we need them. So, Eric, I commend you and staff, Kurt and you guys, you guys doing an incredible job at that. So, it's not, it's not something, it's a hodgepodge situation and we're, we're prepared for it when we need it. So, great job on that.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickla?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 2025-27, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Elam's Excavating LLC for the 2025 street maintenance concrete program in the amount of $1,287,426 and declaring an emergency.
All right, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickla?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Right, ordinance 2025-28, I need a motion to read by title only.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I vote not count.
Council discussion. Just cruising right along here, council discussion. All right. Okay, we're good. All right, ordinance 2025-28, motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Pavement Technology, Inc. for Reclamite Pavement Rejuvenator in the amount of $210,000.
Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Strickla?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-29, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Strosser Construction, Inc. for crack seal in the amount of $100,000.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickla?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-30, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with J&amp;A Construction, Inc. for Mastic in the amount of $100,000.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickla?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-31, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with ANA Safety, Inc. in the amount of $125,000 for the 2025 street striping program.
All right, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickla?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-32, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Queen City Blacktop Company for asphalt maintenance work at city facilities and citywide bike paths in the amount of $215,200.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickla?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Right, ordinance 2025-33, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with PCI Services in an amount not to exceed $200,000 to upgrade, to upgrade the city server room climate control system.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. This is, as Jeff said, an ordinance for a climate control system. This is down in the lower level, and it keeps our critical data servers at the right temperature and humidity. And it's 23 years old and failing, and they've assured us that the new unit will fit in the elevator, and they'll be able to get it downstairs. So with that, ordinance 2533 is recommended for adoption.
All right, thank you. A motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spath?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 2025-34, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with A&amp;T Europe Spa, Murtha Pools, USA, in an amount not to exceed $67,000 for the purchase and installation of nine Murtha PVC Absolute starting blocks for the Mason Municipal Aquatic Center.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You've all been in the aquatic center and seen the starting blocks, may not realize the two different styles that we have. The one is pole-mounted, and it works fine in the concrete, but in the bulkhead that's movable, they do move back and forth. We've worked with the manufacturer over the last three years to try to find a resolution, and the best resolution that we've found is to change it to the platform style blocks on the bulkhead. We'll still use the post-mounted ones on the deck, because that'll allow us more flexibility with the pool and for our rentals that we host, as we host events there. So the money wasn't included in the budget, the $67,000. We had gotten a quote from Murtha last year to put in the budget. So with that, ordinance 2025-34 is recommended for adoption.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spath?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spath?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spath?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spath?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
All right, 23 on the agenda is committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report? Councilmember Hackey?
Just one moment, please. Actually, if someone else wants to give theirs while I pull mine up, I forgot to get my notes up.
Anyone else? Well, the, oh, yes, go ahead. Nope, go ahead.
We did just have, as Vice Mayor Chance mentioned earlier, that we did have a finance committee meeting right before this meeting. The bulk of the meeting was discussed, discussing the Warren County Drug Task Force. They are finishing up a lease and are looking at getting a more permanent building structures. So most of the communities are looking to add capital, one-time capital investment to that. Obviously, we've been a big supporters of the Warren County Drug Task Force in the city of Mason, and over the last couple of years for about $100,000. And so that one-time capital commitment would help with their facility. Sheriff Riley has asked all the communities to kind of pitch in what they can. And so look for legislation on that next meeting, next meeting, so we'll discuss it more.
Okay, great. Councilmember Hackey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm ready now.
You're welcome.
All right, so the downtown committee of council met on February 27th. A lot of interesting updates from the Mason Deerfield Community Development Corporation. First off, they have hired a director of strategic operations, and she will begin working on March 24th. So we're looking forward to seeing what kind of direction she can bring. The Mason Mile meetup has been rescheduled. For those of you who don't know, there was a gentleman who frequented, well, actually worked at the American Legion. He was a staple throughout town. I mean, you saw him everywhere. Boomer passed away, and on the day they had originally planned to have the Mason Mile meetup, there was a celebration of life for Boomer at the Legion. So they have rescheduled, and that will be on March 20th at the Legion from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. At the time of the meeting, interviews were being conducted to select a firm to complete the Mason Mile master plan. They expect to award the contract, if they haven't already, by mid-March, and they expect that to be completed within approximately six months. They also presented a preliminary plan to create additional parking and gathering spaces adjacent to the public parking behind the Mason Grill. Staff is currently evaluating that, and will work with CDC personnel to potentially move forward with this project.